I want to say hello to Kamata Johnson and to Michelle Jones, candidates for seat D in the upcoming North Lauderdale city election. We'll get into this in a second, but this is a special election. This is not a regularly scheduled. There is a vacancy on your city commission in North Lauderdale and that needs to be filled by a vote of the people, which is the way it should be. We also invited the third candidate in this race, Louis Ricketts, but we have not had a response from that person. And so we will continue. We appreciate both of you accepting our invitation very much.
Thank you.
Kamata Johnson, tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Hello, my name is Kamata Johnson. I'm a mother. I'm a mother. I have seven children. I have five grandchildren. I am an activist in the community for people. I'm running because I have a passion for people and I love my community. I'm new to North Lauderdale. I've been here three years, but I absolutely love my city that I live in. I care about the things that's going on in the community. I'm very active in the community and I'm running so that I can impact, I can share some strengths, some knowledge and make the community better.
Tell us two or three things specifically that you've done to involve yourself in your community.
Two or three things. I have a nonprofit organization. It's called Doing Good in the Hood. I like to run through the city and one of the things I notice when I run through the city that there are a lot of people in need, just simple things, life necessities. So I have done a back to school event for two years. I've been in the city three years for two years in a row. I've done a community back to school event that served over 900 people. I gave back not just book bags, clothes, shoes, toiletries, everything to help the families. I've also done a turkey giveaway for two years in a row in our city where I also gave away not just turkeys, but and all the fixings, but clothes, shoes, toiletries, and other things that families need as well.
Okay, very good. That sounds great. Have you volunteered your time with seven kids and five grandchildren and your and community activities? You're a very busy person. Parenthetically, I grew up as one of seven. I'm one of seven kids. I know what it's like to be in a house with seven kids. So I want, but I wanted to ask you, have you ever served on a city board? Have you been to city commission meetings? Have you involved yourself in city government in any way?
Yes, sir. I do attend the meetings. Sometimes I end up watching them online. I have to catch up to find out what's going on in my city, but I have attended city meetings. I have not sat on city boards, but I have act, I've been very active with the city government as far as the different events that I put on or finding out how can I help or volunteer or help in those areas.
Of all the places you could have lived in South Florida, why did you pick North Lauderdale?
To be quite honest with you, I didn't pick North Lauderdale. North Lauderdale picked me. I moved here three years ago for love and that love lasted all of two months. And so my children and I were homeless for a little while and I wanted something as normal as I could to find for my children. And we found the Bad Boys Basketball Club. They took my boys in because I didn't have the money to play, pay for AAU basketball, which is very expensive. They allowed me to be the team mom for that organization. My boys got to play. Then we found out about Somerset High School right there on the corner. I got my children into this school. I became active with the school and their events. I volunteered there at the school and North Lauderdale became home. I got to know the principals at all of the schools, built relationships and it's home. I love it here now.
Okay. Let's, let's hear from Michelle Jones. Michelle, I want to begin with the same question, which is tell us a little bit about your biography and why you decided to run for, for city government in North Lauderdale. I think your mic is muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um. There's, okay, got it. I have lived in North Lauderdale and Tamarack. First I lived, I moved here in Tamarack, probably about 20 years ago. I bought my first home in Tamarack, Sheikah's Village. That were, that's where I bought my first home. And then my husband and I bought our second home, also in Tamarack, but right next to North Lauderdale. Then we got, I got a divorce and I bought my own home in North Lauderdale 18 years ago. So I've been here. I'm a teacher. I've worked in the, the school system for 15 years teaching culinary art. I teach the brain part of culinary, which means I teach the business part of it. So I've taught in Atlantic Tech, Sheridan, McFatter, most of those schools that, and I've also worked in Miami in the Juvis system for seven years. Then after I got my master's degree, I start working in psychology. Why I'm running, I have been here a long time and I've seen what the city was before. I don't know if any of you knew Jack Brady. That was 29 years. Jack was the mayor. And I met Jack in the community, actually. He met me at the school with the students at the Boys and Girls Club and that's how we met. And ever since then, Jack and I have been like, you know, Michelle, why don't you come with your students and come and do some stuff with the city? So, you know, I've done when it was the 50th, we done a big cupcake for the 50th. So I've been very involved with that, the summer camps. My son has been going there since he was four. I know all the old members that are at the city of North Lauderdale. So I have been in North Lauderdale and Tamarack for a lot of years where I've given my services to them throughout the years. So running in North Lauderdale now is because I see where it's going. The last 10 years, our city is literally starting to run down. Nothing that it was 10 years ago. It's, it's nothing like it was. The warmth of it, it's not there anymore. As you know, we used to have, Jack used to get on the fire hydrant. We used to drive around Christmas time. But people, I mean, it was just a real connection to people. And that is what I personally miss about it is the connection to people understanding who, I mean, mostly everybody know who the mayor was. They may not know the commissioners, but they knew who their mayor was. They don't, they don't anymore. They don't even know who was the commissioner. Walking around and talking to people, that's something that I realized that, okay, they don't know who they are anymore because a lot of them are not community involved. So that's why I'm running.
Tell me a little bit more about that very last point you made. I'm fascinated by that. What, you've been there so long. What has changed? Why, why has this personal connection between people and their government? Why has it been lost? How?
I think the reason why is because, again, I think I just said it. You have some people that are naturally born that are community leaders and you have some people that just do it because it's professional. You know, it's a, it's a professional that they do. And some people are directly born to do that. It's their, it's their God given gift for, and Jack was that person. So I think because the passion for a lot of people, it's probably not there. A lot of the mayors and commissioners that has been after that in the last decades probably don't have the same impact within the community. Probably is not a part of the Boys and Girls Club. Probably they're not a part of the school system. I sit on the Broward Diversity Board, you know, it's something that I'm proud of and I sat on there for four years and it was just constantly a fight. And I'm not, I am not one to get involved in politics and shut me up. That's not who I am. I'm sorry, but I need to make sure that the reason I'm on the board is to make sure that our school system is being that. So me playing along with people in politics is not something that I'm ever going to do. I'm not going to play along. I'm not the play along girl. Maybe that's why I'm never going to win is because I'm not the play along girl is because I feel like when you start playing along is where you lose what you started out to do because you started to get into the gang of politics where I'll get you in because you can't say this or you can't say that. That's not why I'm there. I'm there to make changes and that's what I'm always going to do. So I don't want the support of people if they're going to put a muffler over my mouth or if I'm going to turn my eyes to what is truly going on, then I don't. I will do the work myself. So I'll be my own person with my own opinions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, that forceful explanation. The, this seat is open because former Commissioner Sampson Bortle was elected mayor. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Jones, is Sampson Bortle, is he a friend of yours, the mayor?
No.
Did you vote for him?
Yes, I did. I voted for him and eight years ago.
Okay.
When he just ran, he came to my house in North Lauderdale and him and his wife sat on my patio and, you know, they were talking about the city and what they want to do. He was the first African American, but I mean Haitian, I think Haitian because I think not because Commissioner Woods was already there. So, you know, he was like, we need our Haitian representation. We need somebody to represent our different community. And I truly believe in that. I think a board must be made up with all of the ethnicity and the different minds of thinking of culture. So yeah, I voted for him and I was one of the people that helped to put him there eight years ago. I think that was eight or 10 years ago. Yes. Did I vote this time around? No, I did not. I did not vote.
And why is that?
Because I didn't, let me, let me make sure that I, I say this right. I just did not, I wasn't happy with, I was not happy with what was going on in our city. I just wasn't seeing it. I wasn't. And so I didn't feel like I needed to be a part of it. So I, the city, I did not.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, did you vote in the last election?
I did.
Uh, did you vote for Mayor Bortle?
I did. Yes, sir.
See a friend of yours?
No, I don't know. I've never had a conversation with him.
Okay. That's fine. It's, it's, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
We've got a lot more. I want to go back to Ms. Jones just for one second. We'll get back to you momentarily. Ms. Jones, are you still teaching in the Broward School System?
No, I'm now working with Florida Department of Education Vocational Rehabilitation. I do work with the school system, but in a different way. I work with people with disabilities. I help the students with disability and I also help adults with disability. My job is to rehabilitate and put them back into society to work, which is something that I'm very passionate about. Anyone that knows me know that I'm very, very passionate about that. I don't think that cities and I don't think that people hire a lot of people with disability because I think they do not know what it is. I think you're not educated. I think the ignorance of it is still there and that's something that I'm going to change, whether I'm commissioner or not. I'm still continuing with that fight.
Okay. So you work for the Division of Voc Rehab for the Department of Education?
Yes. I'm a, I am a provider and a vendor for the state of Florida.
Okay. I've got a lot of other questions, but I want to open the floor to my colleague, Dan Sweeney for questions right now, if I can. Go ahead, Dan.
Sure. Yeah. This is for both of you. Since, since Michelle's been talking, I'll go to you, Kamata. Do you, do you know the, the third candidate, Ms. Louis Ricketts? Have you, have you met, met them? Have you, you know, done, done any, you know, community forums with all the candidates or anything?
No, sir. I actually met her the first time when we were scheduled to have our interview at City Hall, which we did not have our interview, but that was my first time meeting her.
What about you, Ms. Jones?
Yeah, first time meeting her.
When the, the commission failed to get this, this, this by appointment some time ago, Louis Ricketts was one of the, the candidates there, was she not?
Yes.
Yes.
And neither of you were though?
No. I mean, we were there, but we weren't one. Yes.
I, I understand.
We both were.
So, uh, how would you characterize, you know, I know this is really a question for Ms. Louis Ricketts, but unfortunately she's not here. How would you characterize her relationship? You know, Steve asked you, do you know the mayor? Are you friends with the mayor, et cetera, et cetera? How would you characterize Ms. Louis Ricketts' relationship with the mayor, if you're aware of it at all? Ms. Johnson, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. I would characterize them, and this is hypothetically speaking, but I would assume they are good friends. As the mayor, in that meeting, he made it clear that that was his candidate of choice and so he declined to interview us.
I see. Ms. Jones, that, that sound right to you?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Jones, you, you also ran for city commission in Tamarack. Is that right?
Yes, I did.
When was, when, what year was that?
2020.
Okay. But you're, you're a North Lauderdale resident now?
Yeah, I've always been a North Lauderdale resident except then, after my son left to school, I, my mom was sick and so I moved in with my mother and also I was going through some illness as the same. So I had to kind of move out of my house for about four years and moving with my mom to help her and for also to help each other because I was going through a really, I would say I was going through a lot in that terms that my mom and I needed each other. So while I was there, um, I'm not, while I was there, I was approached to run. Michelle, you are an advocate. You are a great part of our city. Yeah, I'm not just a city for North Lauderdale. I'm not just Tamarack. I am in every city when it comes to summer program, when it comes to kids, when it comes to everything. But at the time I'd lived in Tamarack. So I decided to take the chance and go ahead and run.
Can you rephrase that sentence, not in the passive voice, when you say you were approached to run? Can you say who approached you to run?
Well, I actually don't really want to get into that, but I was approached and says, Michelle, I, we think that you would be a great candidate for, to run for your city. We really believe that you are the strong kind of person that you, that we needed to help to run for the city. However, at, you know, the support for that was dropped in the middle. So I just say, decided to say, you know what? My son says, Mom, you're not a quitter. So just, you know, do, do you and follow through with this. And, and, and I'm glad I did because I learned a lot. When I tell you, I've been trained by the best. I have been trained by the best when it comes to campaigning because that was one hell of a campaign. And boy, did I get a life lessons from that.
I'm sure.
I did.
Tamarack politics can be, can be.
Oh, it's, it's, oh my God. I, I'm trying to sum it up in a word.
If I may, Michelle.
Believe me, I'm glad I did it. I, I mean, I am so, it took me two years to recover, but I'm so happy that I did it.
If I, if I may, if you've been trained by the best, tell us who, who is the best?
That's not a good, well, let me just put it this way. When I said I've been trained by the best, I mean, I've been trained by the best of the bad.
I, I, I want to talk to Ms. Johnson for a second as well. You know, we asked in our questionnaire to list the most important issues in your community. And the first thing you said is that residents say over and over that they feel ignored and that their issues and concerns are overlooked. And you said you'd like to work with the mayor and other commissioners and designing a system to improve the flow of information to residents. Could you get into that a little bit more? What, what does such a system look like? You know, you know, you, you say you want to get into designing it, but you must have some ideas for how to get information to the public in a, in a more timely, better fashion.
Absolutely. When I said, I'm thinking something like a modern portal. Right now, if our water's dirty, we don't know our water's dirty unless we go, you know, if they have access to the internet, you go to the internet, you go on the webpage and you can look and see if there's a banner up there. There is a way that residents can sign up for a text message, but it's a lot of fine, it's a lot of things I have to go through just to get to that text message, just to sign up to get a text message to know what's going on in our city. So we need something interactive that we can get our residents to sign up for so they can know when water's dirty, when there's an active shooter or something's going on in the community, or if there's a grant or something that they could qualify for. More communication. Also, even like with, a lot of residents are really frustrated with city, our code enforcement. It's like a lot of work for them. I think we have maybe four city code enforcement. So it's a lot of work for them to input the information and ride around the city and see what's going on. So in that portal, I envision neighbors, they can type in their complaints. The city can look at it and, and respond, you know, in a faster way to help keep our city clean. Even with crime, there may be something that they could port or something that, you know, just more communication so that the commissioners, the city can see it, we can respond. And it's, and I said, we, I just included myself. And the, the residents can respond and that communication is, is not there. And I think I totally agree with what Michelle was saying. That's one of the challenges, you know? So if we can't have an open communication, the residents will now feel included. That's that inclusion. They'll feel included. They'll feel a part of the community. And I think it'll just make it better for everyone.
Yeah, I, I, I will say, you know, we're, we're interviewing candidates in a lot of different cities. And North Lauderdale, you know, most cities, I just go to their website. I find the qualifying papers for all the candidates and I get the emails and phone numbers that way. And I contact everybody to set up things like this. North Lauderdale was the only city that not only did not have that information online, but required me to fill out a public records request in order to get it. So, you know, that was, that was unusual. Like I said, we're doing a lot of cities. This was the only one where I had to, you know, file official public records requests just to get your guys' qualifying papers. So I, I can, I, I, I know that's not something that citizens really care a lot about so much as, you know, dirty water is a lot more, a lot bigger issue. But if, if, if even that, just getting qualifying papers for candidates requires going through the, the public records process, I, I can't imagine what else is getting lost in the shuffle. So.
Yeah. Lot of information. I'm sorry to cut you off. There's a lot of, um, that gets lost and residents are frustrated. And I think that would just open up those lines of communication.
Steve, did you have more questions?
Yes, I do. I want to hear more about this, this sense of frustration that, that is, that is out there. That's, that's, that's unfortunate. That needs to change. Ms. Johnson, North Lauderdale, like a lot of cities in Broward, has a council manager or commission manager form of government. You've got a city manager, Michael Sargis, who's full time. But describe for the uninitiated, describe as you understand it, how does a council manager form of government actually work? What's the manager's responsibility and what's the commission's responsibility?
The manager, from my understanding, he oversees the commissioners. The commissioners' responsibility is, well, we, we're, as a commissioner, you're, you're required to report to meetings, which, any kind of meetings where they're the regular scheduled meetings, twice a month, or the special election meetings, or grants, or anything like that. They are, we're also required to create a budget for the year. City commissioners also are required. One of my favorites is to interact with the public on a daily basis, to be involved, to be engaged, to listen to proposals and so forth and make decisions. So with the city manager and the city commissioners together to work, to come up with resolutions and solutions for the city.
Okay. One of the most important jobs in any city government is the city attorney. Who's the city attorney for North Lauderdale?
I, I know his face, but I cannot remember his name right now.
Ms. Jones, you know who the city attorney is in North Lauderdale?
Yes, I do. He was the attorney for Tamarack. And as you know how that went, I think he's an amazing guy. He really is. Because I see the work that he's done in Tamarack and to see him being driven out, it was happy to see him at the city of North Lauderdale because I think he is well, well-reversed on when it comes to law. And I think when I win the election, I'm going to enjoy working with him and gaining a lot of knowledge from him to what I can and cannot do when it comes to approaching the city.
Okay. I would, I would encourage both of you to get to know him better. One of you is going to be working closely with him, or I think unless Ms. Louis Ricketts wins the election. His name is Sam Goran, G O R E N. Sam Goran's been a municipal attorney in Broward forever. What was I going to ask? I had another follow-up question along that line as well. I'm going to say in, to piggyback on what my colleague Dan Sweeney said, you know, I can't find, I, on the city website, Ms. Johnson, I can't find bios, biographies of the mayor and city council members. I can't find the email address of the mayor and city council. You know, there's, there's nice, there are nice videos on there of people from BSO, from the sheriff's office and work, the work they do in North Lauderdale. And that's great. That's fine. But people want to know who their elected officials are and they don't want to have to go through three or four hoops to find out who the, who their city council, council member or commission member is. So I want to ask you, Ms. Jones, about to tell us a little bit more about that Broward County Schools Diversity Committee you've served on. What does that, do you still serve on it? What does that committee do?
No, I'm no longer on that board. I am now on the state of Florida Board for disability, for individual with disability board. I'm on that one now. Um, I serve, I'm not sure if I should mention who I serve under. I don't know if that's something I want to do, but I served on that board for four years because I, the person that I was working under saw my passion at a meeting and she asked me to represent her on the board. And so while I was there, one of my job was to visit the schools. And I was in shock and I was appalled about the fact that our school system was, and our schools, most of our schools was so filthy and was full of moles. And at the time, back in 2020, and, you know, at the time in that district, I think the person over that district, again, I'm not going to use any name, but I was just, and so I start fighting. I start fighting because I was a volunteer mentor at Parkway Elementary, since they've had the mentor program. And I think the mentor program is going on its sixth year. And so I've been a part of the mentor program since it was open. And that's where my passion came from, is to get the moles out. So I show up at those meetings every single month. I made a lot of noise. I, you know, I, to the point where people were just getting sick of me. I wanted to know why the, why, why the construction was stopped. Why are our children going into school, back into the school where, when it's like this? They sent people out with us because that was their job to send people out with us. They took pictures. I sent the pictures back. It was just ongoing until finally, after like four years of constantly going to those meetings, then I was called, I'm not working with people. I shouldn't do these things. And then they wrote up an article in your newspapers about when they had that about the school and the moles that was there. Finally, they're tearing down the schools and the part with the mold and they're starting to build Parkway now. So my passion always is for the children and for our community and to get things done, not to, to appease to the politician and their nonsense.
Okay. You, you've had a lot of interaction with the, with the school district and your stories about Parkway are interesting and disturbing because of the conditions there. Who's the, who's the district school board member whose district includes the city of North Lauderdale? Do you know?
Um, it's Lori Aladeft, if I'm not wrong. I think it's Lori Aladeft. She is the, she is.
Okay. And, and back up a second, the state board for persons with disabilities that you serve on, how do you get appointed to that board? Who makes the appointments?
Um, I was appointed to that board, I, by Michael Adine. I think he, his office appointed me to the board.
Okay, sure. He's the current mayor of Broward County.
Yes.
Okay. Let me switch back to Dan Sweeney for more questions. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah. Ms. Johnson, this is, this is ancient history, but you had a, you had an arrest for, for forgery, check kiting in 1994, decades ago. But, you know, we, we've had this crop up in other elections where somebody, you know, had the, had their rights to vote restored under Amendment Four, but had not had their, the rest of their civil rights restored. And then it became a huge controversy, you know, most recently in, on the Broward School Board. So are you eligible to, to run for election in Florida?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm also a teacher here in Florida as well. And I served, all of my rights were restored. I was young and it was a silly mistake, hanging out with the wrong crowd, which is another reason why I'm so passionate about children and why I work with youth. And we were writing a bad check for tennis shoes, trying to get some tennis shoes. So that's part of the reason why when I do my community giveaways, I'm thankful for Nike and our sponsorship, we give away tennis shoes. We always give away brand new tennis shoes to the children in the community because it has a lot to do with self-esteem and just everything. You'd just be surprised how someone's life has changed just by having basic needs. But that's what I wrote a book for. I was convicted. I was given 500 hours of community care. And I, and yes, sir.
Okay. Let me just, yeah, thanks, Dan. Thank you for that question and thank you for the answer. Was the conviction, Ms. Johnson, was the conviction a felony?
Yes, sir. It's over $100. The check was over dollars.
Okay.
Check was for $35. That was for thirty-five dollars.
Is it my, is it my computer, Dan, or is Ms. Johnson's voice cutting out a little bit?
I believe her, her voice is cutting out a bit because the, the microphones are picking up a dog. I'm not sure where that's coming from.
It's probably mine.
Okay.
Uh, I'm like
It's okay.
It's probably my baby. Let me go, let me go stop him.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay, all right. We're not going anywhere. Ms. Johnson, we're, we're mostly interested in uh, first of all, you know, uh, your forthrightness in in disclosing it. Uh, it's out there as a public record anyway. We we would find out about it sooner or later anyway. But this is very important that uh, and and we've editorialized uh, uh, about the the problems with this, why it's not a good system, but getting your right to vote restored is isn't enough. When you run for public office, you have to have your civil rights restored, including the right to run for public office. I don't want there to be any ambiguity about whether you're legally able to run for office, which which is part of a process known as clemency. Can you tell us about that at all?
Yes, sir. I have um, back in Georgia, and this is where I happen, I'm from Georgia. But in order to care for children, I owned and operated my own childcare center in Georgia for over twenty years. In order to operate and deal with children and um, going through the background checks, I had to gain clemency in order to be able to work with children. And so I took care of that long, long time ago.
You did that in the state of Georgia, you're telling us, right?
Yes, sir. That's where I'm took place.
Where we, where were you living in Georgia at the time? What city or what town?
Well, I grew up in Douglasville, Georgia. My last home that I owned was in Decatur, Georgia.
Sure, just outside Atlanta, right? Yeah. You told, you told us early on in your opening statement that you, for a while, you were homeless.
Yes, sir.
How long were you homeless? And I think I've got a number of questions, but I think the most thing, thing I'm most interested in is we all want this as a society. How do you get out of being homeless? How did, how did your homelessness end?
Ah, oh, well, that was, this is just an amazing story. But um, like I said, I moved here for love. That love lasted a two months. My children had to get out of that environment. It was not a safe environment for us. And so we did, we slept in our car for about two months. And um, because I am a, a part of an organization, my first thing, I was too proud to tell anyone what was going on. I was embarrassed. I was hurt. Um, I still continue to do my community giveaways. No one knew anything. And um, I'm a part of an organization called Eastern Stars. And once one of my sisters found out about it, um, they sent me the money to put down a down payment. They helped me um, put down to the home to where we live now. And so we were able to move into a home. Um, during that process, um, because I had moved here from Georgia, I still owned my home in Georgia, but I had closed my school, closed my businesses, so I didn't have income. So I have a job, the place where I'm actually employed and I'm at work right now. Um, um, I was able to sell my home. I didn't sell it for what I wanted to sell it for, but I was able to sell it so that I didn't have uh, foreclosure or anything like that on my home so that now that I'm ready to purchase a home in North Lauderdale, I can. So it was challenging, but even through that I persevered, um, which is who I am, which is another reason why I want to be commissioner. I have children. I understand the needs, the conditions, but there's no stopping me. If there's somewhere I need to be, I'm gonna be there. I'm gonna make it a point. Um, I'm definitely an advocate, like I said, uh, for the children and for my children, for the community. There are a lot of needs that go unaddressed in the community. And I'm a part of that. I'm a product of that. I've experienced a lot of challenges and I know how to persevere. I know how to bring in resources to help the people overcome, to move on to greater and better.
What is your main occupation?
I'm a teacher.
Where, where?
I'm at Art Tech Academy. I'm a preschool teacher here at Art Tech Academy and I have my own um, tutoring. I tutor on the side, Miss Kim Tutors, where I tutor students.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, Ms. Jones, you uh, in, in part of your answer, I I I think you said uh that that, the, the, the warmth is not there at, at uh, in in the city anymore. Um.
No, that was Ms. Jones.
Right, yeah, Ms. Jones. Uh, um, I want to know wh- what exact, you know, and and part of that is, you know, you had a longtime mayor and now you've got a mayor that was just elected. Um, so you know, a lot of people aren't going to know, you know, who's uh, who's uh, i- who's in charge in City Hall. But is there some other X factor that uh, that you, that you think needs to be returned to the city other than the fact that you, there's a, there's a lot of new blood?
Well, you got to remember that uh, the mayor now has been here for eight years in uh, District D. So what I realize is that a lot of people don't even know what commissioner does. Um, what I realized is that a lot of people goes, who's the commissioner? Uh, they didn't know that, that, they didn't know the name of their commissioner. They didn't know what commissioner does. They, they don't know any of that stuff and it was surprising to me that you don't know your commissioner. They didn't know their mayor either. They didn't know any of that. So it is, it, people don't people don't um, really care who they are because once you say to them, government, especially when you go in the neighborhood that is like uh, poverty stricken, they're like, we, we really don't give a damn about who the commissioner is and we don't care who the mayor is. They're not doing anything for us and, you know, um, we can care less who they are. And all of that, I I I say this, the connection between government and people is not there. One of the things that I, the question that was asked, Ms. Johnson, is how are you going to connect with the community? This is this, and I, I'm going to, I, I'm going to continue to connect with the community the way I have always connected with the community is just to be involved. But one of the things that I can promise, which is the only thing that I'm going to promise, is that I am going to get to know the over five thousand people that are in District D. And the way I'm going to get to do that, I really don't want to tell because, you know, but I'm just going to bring something back that a lot of people stop using, which is Neighborhood Watch. Getting involved with the people in the community. Listen, those fifty-fives and overs, you can get in there with the, so with, with, with the boards and you can have a relationship with them. You can. You can't just have a relationship with them when you're ready to vote. You can have a relationship with them all the time. They love having relationship with the people that are running the cities. They want to have a relationship with the mayor. They want to have a relationship with the commissioners. They really honest to do, but they don't get the opportunity to to do that. So my thing is, for me, I'm going to make sure that I get to know these communities because that's where I am going to get to connect with the people is to understand and know the communities. Know the, the development, who runs them, know who's the part of the association, who's a part of that. Making sure that every single resident know who I am and that I'm representative.
You said, uh, in your, in a, when we, we asked you to list the three most important issues, you uh, you listed senior homelessness there and then later on in the questionnaire, we also asked, what is the most overlooked issue in your community? And there you answered, the most overlooked issue in our community is homelessness a- and development. Um, but uh, so twice throughout your questionnaire, you really kind of hammered home that homelessness is a big issue in in North Lauderdale. I want to know, what can a relatively small city like, like North Lauderdale do uh, to, to address a, a, a large scale homeless problem? And am I right really in calling that a large scale problem in North Lauderdale?
Well, it's a large scale problem everywhere, especially now since the rent is uh, the way, the way rent is going on here, I see it in Tamarack. I mean, I don't know if you guys have driven to Tamarack. It's like every bus stop has a homeless person in there. There's a plaza right back here on University and um, I think uh, I think Seventy-Fifth. And it's like the whole sidewalk is spread off with uh, and and a lot of them are young adults, but when you go into the park and uh, it's so funny, I'm, I'm the library. I meet a lot of my clients at the library and I meet so many homeless people out at the library. I meet a lot of homeless people in the park. And um, I have some ideas that I, uh, you know, when I become commissioner that I would like to throw around. Uh, but one of the things I know, I have run across a lot of small businesses that want to put up senior homes. I've seen some beautiful senior homes that are funded by the government. And um, that's what I want to figure out, why don't we have more of those uh, senior homes where senior can afford? I know there's young adults, but I think they also have an opportunity because, you know, they have the age groups and many of them are mental illness or on drugs. But seniors are just people that are, cannot afford anymore, don't have any family, end up with not, their social security that cannot reach anymore, can't do that. They can't, they can't. I've met so many of them. I know so many of them right now and that is my biggest thing. I, I look at my mom and I see my mom, even as a VR counselor, they're in, I, I go to the homeless shelter. Some of my clients are in the homeless shelter. And when I go there and I have a eighty-two-year-old woman and I'm like, you know, I'm trying to help her to to get, to not be evicted from her home. And then I see a mom with four kids and and she's living in the shelter and her van trying, there's a lot of stuff that commissioners are not seeing. They're not seeing really what's going on in the community. And and that's, I think it's really lacking when it comes to that. It's seriously, I think there's a lot they can do because there's a lot of government money for that kind of things. There's a lot of government money for homes, for senior homes. It happens in other community. Why can't it happen here?
Okay.
Ms. Johnson, could you weigh in on the same question? Uh, um, how big an issue is homelessness in North Lauderdale relative to nearby communities? And what can a, a city the size of North Lauderdale do to address what's kind of a systemic problem?
Yes, homeless, homelessness is important. I haven't seen, I, I know when Ms. Jones was speaking, she made reference to Tamarack um, more so than North Lauderdale because I hadn't seen that much homelessness in North Lauderdale. However, I am very active in the community. Um, since I've been there, since day one, I'm the person that goes out and meets all of my neighbors. So when I run, I run through different communities and I always stop and talk to people. The biggest challenge that I found in North Lauderdale is not homelessness per se, but it is the the landlords that are coming in, the big companies that are coming in, buying the homes in North Lauderdale's and residents are having to rent. I have met probably within the last week um, and talked with residents that are renters that have been in North Lauderdale for over thirty years and have never heard of our grant program where they can purchase a home. So again, I still go back to communication as being the number one problem because North Lauderdale does have its challenges, but it's not all bad. It's just that we lack communication and the residents don't know the programs that's available. Ms. Anna, the former mayor, she put a lot of things in place that people just don't know about. And the more we can get the word out, whether like Ms. Jones says, it's knocking on doors, which I do, or, you know, talking to people. But it's more so getting the word out because there are programs in place. There is money there in the city. There are places where people can beautify their homes. They don't know. I, I saw a resident painting. I says, you know, there is a program you can apply for to get your house painted. I was like, what? Really? You know, so um, if, if more people in the community that's been in the community forever could take advantage of some of the programs that are already there in North Lauderdale, they can be come homeowners as opposed to these big companies coming in and buying the homes up away from the residents, the people that's been there that love the city forever. I think that's the biggest challenge that we have in our community right now.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, okay. Um, Ms. Johnson, have you been to a city commission meeting? Have you been, been to and spoken at commission meetings?
Yes, sir, I have.
Tell us that, tell us what that experience is like.
Uh, well, several. The, uh, my very first time I went to ask the city for support um, for uh, one of the school, back-to-school events I was giving and the city supplied me with a stage. Um, another time I went, I asked the city for support. They supplied me with freezers because I needed somewhere to put the turkeys to keep them refrigerated while we give them away to the residents in the community. And each time I received a positive response. Um, the very last time I spoke was again at that interview um, for candidates um, where we were allowed to speak in just public forum and I just shared a little bit of who I was, um, was in that forum. That was uncomfortable, but uh, we got through it.
Uh, North Lauderdale was created in the early nineteen sixties. Uh, where you live, where your neighbors live, those were, those were uh, tomato, tomato patches, tomato farms. They grew string beans in North Lauderdale. Uh, I'm sure you know this history. It's, it's, it's interesting. Um, like a lot of cities in Broward, it was uh, it was developer-driven and it was um, it developed very quickly. And one thing I've noticed in my last few trips through the community is, you know, I see um, and this is true of a lot of places in Broward that grew fast in the sixties and seventies. I see a deterioration of the housing stock. It is deteriorating before your very eyes. Um, I see what I would describe as a lack of code enforcement. Uh, you're nodding, Ms. Johnson. Tell me, tell me that I'm right and tell me what I'm describing. What are you seeing?
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right. As I said earlier, I know we have maybe only four code enforcement officers in our city that are required to cover the five miles of our city um, with coats and everything. So I think that we need more code enforcement um, to help with the city. Again, the city has money available for grants to beautify our cities, funds available where residents can paint their homes, um, weatherproof their homes, fix their roofs, um, and so forth. Um, a lot of the homes are owned by big companies that are not taking care of these homes. There were the residents may not know how to get in touch with them to, you know, or how they can qualify for these programs to help beautify the city. And so again, that's the challenge. Um, another challenge is um, with the city like ours and like Ms. Jones says, I totally agree. And that's why when I do my community service events in North Lauderdale, I usually bring out about nine hundred to a thousand people. So the people do want to be involved. The people do want to know who their commissioners are. Um, they, 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 they love the community vibe. Anytime there's something going on, the people do come out. They always respond to my events. So the thing is, getting the people out, if the city would sponsor more community-driven events, getting the people out, build the morale of the people in the community. Let's clean up cleanup days, litter days, whatever the case may be, to build a morale, I think the city um, will be great. I think we can clean up our city. I think um, funds could be appropriated to do these type of events, to get the city out, to clean it up, get the cities to paint, more initiatives to clean up your house. You know, unfortunately, sometimes you have to do that. That's what you have to do.
All right, uh, you, you went kind of fast for me there. Uh, to, to back up a second, half a, that's all right. You've put, you have put on community events where nine hundred to a thousand people have attended, you said?
Yes, sir. My last event was just this Christmas. I did it at um, North Lauderdale Elementary. Um, the principal there, Ms. Williams, allowed me to use um, her um, pool and we had nine hundred and forty people to sign in. I provided toys, toiletries, brand-new shoes, brand-new clothes. Um, Walmart donated me over a hundred um, fresh Christmas trees. So we were able to give them Christmas trees just this last December.
And and this is all run, this effort is run through what organization?
My nonprofit is called Doing Good in the Hood.
Right, Doing Good in the Hood. I got to say that to get nine hundred and forty people in the city the size of North Lauderdale to do anything is a, is an astounding achievement. Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones, how, uh, you, you're connected to the community and you've, you've, you've informed us very well here today. Tell us, how well-known is Ms. Johnson's outreach efforts for uh, you know, giving toys and Christmas trees and other things for, for the needy?
I have never met her before. Um, I have never met her before, uh, the interview at the city. I have never met Ms. Johnson before. So I, I, I don't know uh, about that. I've never met her before. So I couldn't even tell you that.
Okay.
Ms. Anna, well, the city officials, because they always give me permission, but Ms. Anna has come out to my events. Um, Commissioner Regina Martin has also come out to some of my events.
Um, can, can I ask you a, a quick question? Ms. Johnson, you, you mentioned that uh, and the former mayor, uh, Anna Ziyadeh had, had come out to your events. Uh, you said you've worked with her in the past and you mentioned programs that she's created that just, people just don't know enough about that could really help people. Um, why'd you vote for the other guy?
No, I, I did not say I worked for her in the past. I said she had programs out at ours, but I voted for
I didn't mean to suggest you were employed by her. I, I mean, like, you, you mentioned the programs that she's done that people just don't know enough about. You mentioned that she comes to your programs. Uh, so what, what made you vote? You mentioned that she comes to your programs. So what made you vote for for the current mayor instead?
I voted for the current mayor because. Well, his his wife and some other ladies knocked on my door. And so as they're talking to me about his campaign, is they sold me on kids, on children. Everything that they told me about him, because I've never met him in person, but everything they told me about him was about programs for youth. And as you know, that was one of my priorities, youth development. So I was like, really? And he was like, yes, he wants this for the youth. He wants that. And I was like, oh, okay. Because I knew currently we didn't have a lot of programs for the youth in our community. As a single mom and when I went to register my children for summer camp. My twins are twelve. When I went to register them for summer camp, the second week registration began. My children were number three hundred and forty-four and three hundred and forty-five. That means that's over three hundred children with nowhere to go in the city. There were for parents that were looking for something locally. So I was really excited to know that he was going to put some programs in place for the youth in our city.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Ms. Johnson, I was looking at the Doing Good in the Hood website, which is a very nice looking website. What what's the main source of funding for the organization?
Donations. Donations. We partner with other organizations, but we collect donations. For this last event that I did, the local stores in North Lauderdale, the Ross, the Walmart, the Publix, all of the stores in our community, the Broward Meets. They all donate and contribute to each event that I put on. So I go to the community. I've built a partnership with the stores in our area.
Okay, good to hear. We're coming up on the top of the hour. We've been discussing these events for close to an hour. I want to say a couple of quick things. Thank you for the questionnaires. We, Dan or I or both of us may have some follow-up questions for one or both of you that we didn't cover here.
May I say something?
Yes, by all means, yes.
North Lauderdale as one of, I think, one of the best summer camp ever around. My son started summer camp since he was four. Mike, which is the city manager now, he was over the summer camp for a long, long, long time. And I used to help them with the end of summer camp party, donate pizza, whatever it is. But they have a really great summer program and it's been one of the best. I did not remove my son. Actually, even when he outgrew, then he start working there. And just one of the best. However, it is not big. It's a small, so it gets full really quick. Now, you're saying that the mayor now is going to implement other programs. But wasn't he the Commissioner for eight years in order to implement these programs? So I'm saying that eight years ago, these programs could be implemented. Today, these programs could be implemented or these programs are already there. There is, there's a lot of different things that I can't understand. As a person in the community, I'm saying, okay, so you're a mayor now, but. What happened to the last eight years when you were a Commissioner? How come we don't have these things done? So that's just what I need to ask. Those are the questions that gets me rumbled up. You know, it's like, okay, why is my community running down? Why is it running down more? Have you taken a drive to district, to the district that you're running for? Have you seen it? I mean, some of the places I have never even knew existed in the back. I have never gone through there. And it was eye-opening for me. I was angry.
Eye-opening how? Eye-opening how?
To see the garbage, the rundown of the city, to see the homes, to see, it was, it was. I don't know, Ms. Johnson, if you have driven around and see on. If you have driven around and see on. Kimberly?
I live on.
You do? So you you've around that area where Silver Lake is. Then you, I I mean, I drove through there. And I was like, you know, I've always driven past that way, never really gone into that or passed the way around the Walmart. But sometimes you just don't drive in these back areas. And when I went back there, I'm like, why is there so much garbage? Why is this? Because I'm on the radio twice a week informing people about the same things that you're saying, telling them about where they can get grants. Tell them about what city is giving away grants. This you can do. What is, I I am informing because the city, they, the people are in our community. They really do not know the things that are there for them, which is, which is so true. It's been years that communication is lacking. It's not just today. It's been that way for years. It's lacking in almost every system that we have. We're not connected.
Michelle, was it that way when Jack Brady was mayor?
No.
No, no?
No. I can compare. Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry, but you can't compare. You you, because you just moved here three years ago, so you cannot compare. I can compare.
Yeah, but we.
I'm like, I'm like, wait a minute, when did this happen?
I'm sorry, let let Ms. Johnson respond. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
I can't compare, but I I'm familiar with community. I know what a wholesome community should look like. You said that about Kimberly. I was like, ah, I live on Kimberly. And I'm very, I'd not only run through Kimberly, but I run through all of the neighborhoods. One other program that I have that I didn't mention, Fishing for Success. And so because there was nothing for the children to do, I go and I pick up children. I take them fishing. I teach them the fundamentals of fishing. I give them another outlet, another perspective. I teach them patience because the kids are just out there. So I'm breaking up fights every day. So yes, I'm very active in that community and giving the children an alternative. You you mentioned. Me voting for him, but he was there eight years. So you you chose not to vote at all because you didn't want to have a part in it. But even though he was there for eight years as a Commissioner, one of the things he said, he felt like he was restricted. I don't know. And I don't know the politics of what happened, but what I am seeing is when he said children, you asked, my question was, why did I vote for him? Because I was excited coming, being new to the community, hearing about someone that wanted to create programs. Because I have programs. I have a fishing program. I take teens every week to the University of Miami from the local schools. The teachers recommend students. I take those students to the University of Miami, teaching them how to count, bet, change, how to do money. So I I do a lot in the community. So when I heard that, I was excited to hear, oh, yay, more programs for the youth.
Let me just, let me just pause it here. By the way, Ms. Johnson, you indicated that, and I don't know much about this. You suggested that the, one of the reasons for the lack of of. Of code enforcement and 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 the the neighborhood deterioration is due to the fact that you have absentee landlords, you have out-of-state corporations that own a lot of the homes there. Is that right? Yeah, okay. That's interesting as well. I wish we had more time, but we don't. And so I wanted to thank you both very much for your your time today and answering our questions and sending the questionnaires. Like I said, we might have follow-up questions as well. We want to know if there's an upcoming forum, either in person or online, where both of you and your opponent, your third opponent will be speaking, if you know of any. So we're interested in that stuff. You know how to reach us, so.
Yeah, I think there's one here on the seventh. In in my community, they did send me an email out. Ms. Johnson, I'm sure you got that. And just to let you know, Ms. Johnson, I'd love to work with you in the in the in the future. To see what my organization is a five oh one C three, but mine is a little bit harder in the sense that I deal with more brokenness. In that sense, I have to rehabilitate people in 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 the aspect of mentally and physically and get them back to work. So I don't collect donation. Most of the help that I give is usually straight from whatever I work. So I don't really collect donation for my five oh one C three. I work for the government and they pay me for the services. And out of whatever I work, I help with their rent and everything else. And then I have a couple of friends that are close to me that say, okay, this rent needs to pay, this light bill needs to do. I'm more try to find people programs that is going to get them to work. And to be able to get all the things that they need on their own. So that's a complete difference between our organizations is that mine is more building. Which is from the, you know, for rehabilitation. And so you can always partner with me and also help. And that's a big thing to have the two of us together. We can be really great in the community of that sense of bringing these. There's a lot of programs out there.
Thank you. Very quickly, what radio station are you on twice a week?
I'm on eleven seventy Caribbean Heartbeat on Fridays at, I'm on there Fridays at nine oh five and at Wednesday sometime at eight oh five. Sometimes they bring me on. But if there's things that I need to talk about and more things, then they're like, Michelle, primary care physician, which is a doctor's office. And also one of my supporters, they just gave me a generous check, which I'm really grateful for. I've always been a big part of their community when it comes to their seniors and wealth and health. Well, you guys know I was a chef before culinary instructor, so I did a lot of nutrition help with Simply Healthcare and a lot of these companies when it comes to health.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to do this in 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 an abundance of fairness. I mean, that's, it's hard to balance the time exactly. But Ms. Jones spoke for a good, good, long while there. So I'm going to let Ms. Johnson, I'm going to let you just respond to anything you just heard or or make any final encapsulated statement for us.
Yes, sir. Again, Kamata Johnson, I am very passionate about the community I'm running. I don't have a lot of history here in North Lauderdale, but the three years that I've been here, the moment I stepped foot in North Lauderdale, I have been working and serving in this community and have not stopped. I I love the people. I love the vibe. I love the diversity. I want to include more inclusion, get more people involved, more people engaged in the community to make the community better. The slogan is, it's the heart of Fort Lauderdale. I would like for it to remain the heart. You know, support more small businesses, the local, the other five oh one C threes. We have a lot of them in our community I wasn't aware of. Where we can all come together and bring more resources to our community. And that's that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you both again very much for the time. Thank you for your insights. Best of luck to you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.